All right, let's start off with public hearings. Does not appear that there's anybody here for a public hearing, so we will go ahead.
Oh, not me.
For public hearings? All right, we can move forward from there. All right, we have to approve the minutes from May 17, 2022. Everyone is able to go ahead and review those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last night's, last month's meeting.
Okay. We'll second that motion. All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the minutes from May 17 are approved. Uh, we're gonna have to skip over the warrants, um, because Caitlin has those. So we'll come, we'll circle back up to warrants after. Circle that. Uh, it does not look like we appear to have our Gilmoney representative, so we will skip over that one. And the Collaborative for Educational Services report.
Um, nothing new, um, looking into, obviously, well, next meeting for that one, and I'll find out more. Next school committee meeting in September, correct?
Excellent, yeah. All righty, thank you very much for attending those meetings. Some next meetings in, I think, yeah, September. All right, regionalization update. I have an update for that one. Um, so we met on May 18th. The focus right now was to obtain, um, high school and middle school educators to go ahead and kind of sit down and have a conversation, what their views of what a combined middle school and high school looked like. Um, and they were actually offering a nice stipend of $100 each. So the, uh, high school educators were, um, on Tuesday, June 28th. Um, so that's next week from 9:30 to 11:30 at the Turner-Schultz High School. And the middle school educators were meeting at Pioneer, um, Wednesday, June 29th, from 9:30 to 11:30. Um, so hopefully we'll get that information back and discuss it at our next meeting. All righty, so we've done that, done that. Capital Planning Committee update.
There isn't a committee, it's just me. You and I now, Jen, right?
That's true. Uh, I can actually speak to that. And we're gonna jump into the procurement authorization and, uh, towards the bottom. Um, so we're working on two things. We're working on a tilt skillet, tilt skillet, and also walk-in fridge and freezer. It doesn't look like either one of those is going to be done on our timeline, which we had hoped, um, by the end of August, just due to...
Supply and demand.
Yeah, supply and demand, lack of, of parts and pieces and, um, being able to get somebody here. So, actually, I am going to bump this up. I'm going to bump the kitchen procurement up now, so it just makes sense to talk about both of them together. Um, so for the tilt skillet, we originally had a budget of $14,300. Um, the lowest bid that we've had, we haven't awarded a bid yet, just because we have some more clarification that we have to go ahead and, um, obtain. Um, as far as, um, what's comparable, because we, there was two different brands. So there was Vulcan brand, um, which is what had been specified in, um, uh, in the description for the bids. Actually, I can pull it up here. Where was it? I had it here somewhere. There it is. Um, so there was Vulcan brand, and then there's also Crown. We just wanna make sure that the Crown was comparable to the Vulcan, so we just have some clarifying questions. But regardless, we're definitely going to need an additional over $10,000, $10,000 to $12,000 to do this project. Um, so that is where we come in, um, and we think we can find it within the budget. Um, so we wouldn't have to go back to the town to go ahead and ask for more money. So we just need a, um, a motion to go ahead and accept the, um, new tilt skillet at a higher price. Unless you have any questions, we can have, have some discussion before we go ahead and make a motion.
What was, I'm sorry, I missed.
It's a tilt skillet, um, so it's basically this, uh, actually Donna gave us a tour.
For the, for the food kitchen?
Yeah.
To make soups and sauces.
Yeah, we talked about this before.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I think the budget amount was years ago. I mean, we're going on...
But I think it was the budget amount when Jim Trill was still here, because he started the project.
So if you think about what things have gone up, and so $10,000 doesn't necessarily seem so crazy.
And the money is definitely in the budget. I think we'll just have to figure out how do we save that earmark that money?
Yep.
Because we won't be spending it until...
Right, right.
Yeah, by June, by June 30th. So I think we'll just have to figure out how do we, and that's a Caitlin question.
And cover those funds, yep.
Yeah. There's definitely funds there.
I'll make a motion to approve the funds needed for the tilt skillet.
Second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you all so much. All righty. How much was the fridge and freezer? Um, that one was, uh, we budgeted $4,000 to $5,000. Unfortunately, we had nobody come to the site walk the very first time. So we had to put out a bid again, um, but we contacted some local lenders and just to see if anybody had interest, and they did. They just didn't really realize, you know...
Seems like some people missed it.
Yes. So we're doing a new site walk, which is next Wednesday, so hopefully we get some local people, um, in some interest.
Cool.
Thank you. Yes. Um, superintendent's report. So I will read that.
She's not here?
She is not, no. She's recovering from surgery. Okay, here it is. Um, so the June superintendent's report, the budget update. Update on news from the Senate floor. After very impassioned speeches, does it say impassioned speeches? From Senator Gobi Antar to attempt to increase regional transportation reimbursement, the request was denied. Reimbursement rate in the Senate budget will remain at 85%. The amendment to restore the regionalization grant was also denied. Senator Hines' amendment to increase the rural aid line item was adopted with a redraft to make it $5.5 million. Senator Lesser's amendment for vocational technical districts to increase length of time till these buildings was not adopted. Senator Brownsberger had also filed an amendment to extend the remote meeting option through December 15, 2023, and that was adopted by the Senate. A DESI update. Updates to the model educator evaluation rubrics in partnership with educators, students, and families. DESI is updating the model educator evaluation rubrics for teachers and principals with a focus on integrating and strengthening cultural... Cultural, culturally? I can't say that word today. Uh, responsive practice, I apologize. The school-level administrator rubric will be piloted during the 2023-2022 school year, while the classroom teacher rubric will be made available to support goal-setting, feedback, and professional learning in advance of a full pilot plan for 2023-2024. Districts will receive feedback on their FY22 Student Opportunity Act Plan Amendment submissions. And a Union 28 update. So proposed meeting schedule for 2022-2023 voted and approved in 2018. After the discussion with the leadership team, I am proposing to go back to the schedule. Please see the schedule for your committee. Final interviews for staff at all four schools are happening as we fill positions. Lindsay Rodriguez is our new coordinator of curriculum and instruction. She will begin on July 1st, and her office will be located at Leverett Elementary. Our leadership retreat is planned for two days at the beginning of August.
Jen, do you have what she proposed? See a schedule, is she talking?
Yes, it is in our packet.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so basically, the proposed meeting is September, November, January, February, March, May, and June, so eliminating October, December, and April.
Got it.
All right, so that was the superintendent's report. Um, since we're talking about that, it just makes sense to kind of jump down, and I think she wanted us to vote on that. Where was that, here? Yes, propose, uh, school committee meeting FY23, discussion and vote. So, as presented to us in our packet, um, we would be meeting, um, in September, November, January, February, March, and May and June. Actually, was January? Let me just check that.
January, September, November, January, February, March, May, June.
All right, perfect, yeah, so it's just eliminating, yeah, eliminating October, uh, December, and April. Does anybody have any discussion? Or anybody like to make a motion?
Did you just say those again?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, please.
The ones, uh, so it'd be September, November, January, February, March, May, and June.
For, um, 22, 23, right?
Yes, yep, yep. And if we needed, I think, necessary, I think, the reason why we went back to the old one, just with all the meetings with COVID and the decisions that we had to make, um, I think it makes sense to go back to the old way and hoping for some sort of normalcy next year.
And for the record, we can, we can still do a 48-hour...
Yep, yep, we absolutely can, yep. I will make a motion to accept the superintendent's suggested meeting times. For 2022?
For 2022, 2023.
Perfect.
Give me a second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent. This is a big passes.
Wow.
It's mouthful. It is. I'm getting good at it, right? I got a backup singer down that end. I know, right? This is fantastic. Getting in our groove. Okay, I'm gonna skip over the Director of Finance and Operations report, and we can jump to the Principal's report.
All right, I've got quite, a couple of things. Just a few housekeeping things that I just wanted to give a little bit of a wrap-up for the year. Um, we have Mary Gilman, who is the occupational therapist, is retiring. So we will say our final farewell to Mary tomorrow afternoon. Um, on to other things is our math, uh, part-time math coach Polly Wagner is. I call it on to other things, so she's not retiring, but she's just stepping back from her role here. And as she said in her farewell message to the staff today, "You haven't seen the last of me, but I won't be back to sub." So that, and Polly is Polly, for those who know her, she's just absolutely wonderful. Um, we have almost all four positions filled right now that we're posted for. Um, we have Leah Grace, who has just moved to Leverett from New Mexico, and she will be our occupational therapist. Um, our full-time adjustment counselor is Jill Susi, and Jill is coming to us from, um, I, uh, Eagle Brook is where she's current, has been, has been employed, also worked at the Mohawk District, at Mohawk at the high school, and also at Hollymont, so excited to have her on board. Um, Jordan Miller is our new, uh, school psychologist, and I put in a person for our, for Polly's replacement, but I don't wanna share, because it hasn't been finalized by Central Office yet. So I think she's just awaiting, um, the interview piece, and Karina Whistlow is doing those in Jen's absence, so she just has to do that. We are finishing our school year with 133 students. Next year, we have 124 enrolled for the school year, and 10 possible other students that are sitting on this, uh, piece of paper in the office. So, um, three of those students are currently, um, homeless and working with the town and with DCF and with the Irving Police Department, but they should be enrolled in school. They are Irving residents, so we don't know if they will show up. Um, and we have seven others. Some are moving into town, and some we are checking, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Not registration. Proof of residency. So we have a lot of people who are finding, um, someone dropped off paperwork today for Pat and I, and we're trying to determine, are they living on Grandma's couch, or do they actually live at Grandma's house? The parent, so this is something we're coming up against quite a bit, so, and then, so I think that's three students, and then another two that are moving here from the Midwest, so we have, looking at numbers, yeah, yeah. So is there a house for sale or something? I don't know.
Right, I know, I didn't think there were many.
Yeah, so we are looking at possibly 10 more, um, students for next year. And doing enrollment. And I just wanted to share with the committee, um, just give a brief wrap-up of the school year. Um, even though, you know, we were back for another year in person, um, which was really fantastic, that's one of the positives I'm gonna share, we had a lot of challenges as a staff, and I, I say, not just me, you know, everybody working in the building. Um, so I'm gonna start with some of the positives and then talk about some of the challenges, um, just so you all know what the teachers went through. And it wasn't, it wasn't just things that I went through, but the things that the, all of the teachers, the paraeducators, and the cafeteria, you know, it was a lot, and, and our custodians. Um, so just, I wanna share a few highlights. Um, positives, the first one, we were back for a full year of in-person learning, which was absolutely amazing. We didn't have to close the school down, um, and partway through the school year, people were able to remove their masks, and if they chose to, and that was, that felt like a really, um, big accomplishment that, for those families that wanted that to happen. Um, we had a great partnership with the town, we're sharing grant funds and being able to provide COVID tests for families, and, um, a lot of these cabinets are still filled, because that, the testing program from the state will be gone next year unless we choose to pay for it. So we're gonna just choose to do what Pat, our Gail, has been doing. Uh, we were able to send home COVID tests with all the kids, we had that many this year. We also got an allotment from the state, so that was a real positive. For the first, oh, I, oh no, I brought it, okay, great. For the first time ever, we came up with, we have an all-school poetry book that went home with all the kids. So poems from all the kids, and the beautiful part about the poetry book is that it brought back book buddies, which had been gone for so long, and then it had classrooms that had never had book buddies partnering with, with younger classes, and then they ended up being poetry buddies. So our fifth graders shined, our sixth graders shined, and they were able to help the youngest kids get their thoughts and their poems onto the paper and into the book. So that was another real, um, positive that we had this year. Um, and as many of you know, we also got to have our in-person art show, which was a huge turnout. Thank you to Eric and Tracy for doing the pizza, and absolutely huge turnout. I mean, I kept looking up and being like, "Oh my gosh, where are all these people coming from?" So that felt really good, and there was one staff member who was new this year, and he said, "Wow, this is pretty amazing." I said, "This is what it was like my first year." So that was an absolute success. And we got to have, um, an in-person graduation, which I have never experienced here at Irving, and that was a lot of fun. Um, classes got to go on field trips. Um, we got to have not just sixth-grade field trips, but other classes as well, music showcases. And probably the best thing that I got to do today was sit with the whole school for the first assembly where we've all been together in over, in just about three years, and watched the sixth-grade slight show, so that was really special. Um, I just wanted to talk about some of the challenging pieces that we, that we dealt with this year as a school staff. Um, out of 180 days, 82 days, we had staff and our students with COVID. So we felt like, wow, that was, Gail and I were reflecting on that today, and felt like, that's a lot of days for a little school, where there was active cases in the building, and unfortunately, we had active ones as of this morning. Um, with increased number of open DCF cases, which I've never experienced so many in all my years of education. Um, we had some incidents where I had to work with the Irving Police Department. TikTok videos being shared outside of school, brought into the school. Um, I had to deal with them with sexual harassment, working with the PD, as well as, um, a possible bullying incident. So lots of these things are happening outside of school, and then trickling in, into our building. A lot, as much as that new park by Pat's house is beautiful, lots of things going on there with kids that then, you know, "You took mine this, you did that, you threw my ball," and then they come in here and we're, and we're squabbling and dealing with that. So that was, um, a lot of the challenges. Um, we've been dealing with a family and getting a student into school who's homeless. I worked with DESI, I worked with the Irving PD and DCF and brought this child in, so as a first grader came in and has never been in school before. So pretty, pretty crazy. Lots of staff out for medical reasons, some planned, some not planned, some I got a text that they were out for a month. Um, and staff out for FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, which is all these wonderful things in place for people, but then that leaves us shorthanded. And that brings me to our next, our lack of substitutes. So if it wasn't for Britt and for, uh, for Ann, we would've been sunk this year. Um, and really, that lack of substitutes became like I had to rob from one classroom to put a staff member in another classroom, when I had somebody go out for FMLA and somebody go out for medical leave. We didn't have some of our specials for a long time, because we had people out. So those were definitely challenges, and then no specials also then makes a contractual challenge for me to make sure that those teachers are getting that contractual prep time. Something that we probably didn't really think too, I didn't think too much about, and I know I'd share this with, with Jen when we were able to have our meetings, the three-year-olds coming into preschool this year, with, they were the first COVID babies, right? They were, uh, they were less than a year when COVID, when we all locked down. So for those kiddos coming in, it was a real eye-opener of what I think the next three to five years will be. Very needy, they needed a lot of help with just with their everyday living, um, from putting on their coats. We had a student who didn't know how to feed himself, didn't know how to use a straw. So those preschool teachers with, with our youngest learners worked really extremely hard this year, and the paraeducators, and Britt spent some time in there. Very needy, lovely kids, wonderful kids, but came in, didn't get to go to Gillie's playgroup, didn't get to go to the library, didn't get to do any of those things. So we really saw the impact, and, and I'm really starting to think of an early childhood plan for the next three to five years, so we can, we can roll out of that. Uh, a lot of increased emotional needs for children, just extra time. I ended up giving a lot, two hours of my day every day to kids who were earning time to come and be with me in my office, checking in with me. Um, so we definitely saw the social-emotional needs of the kids. But I don't wanna end on a, on a, on a bad note, ever. I always wanna make us feel really positive, so something that I am really, really excited about, every student that started here in September and finished in June made gains in their literacy and their reading, so that's a real success to celebrate for sure. Every student improved their benchmark assessment reading scores. Again, the students that started in September and finished in June, so that's a real tribute to the teachers and our literacy, our literacy staff. Um, and it was really nice, the kids got to do walking field trips, they did some to the bowling alley. We finally got to connect the school and the library, so a class was over to go, able to go over there. And lastly, our kitchen, Donna and her two amazing staff, and all of the teachers that helped out in the kitchen served 16,652 breakfasts this year and 12,325 lunches. So, and with commodities being really hard to get. So being creative in the kitchen, and it's really hard to get a lot of those supplies. So just wanted to share some of the highlights and some of our struggles, and that we, I'm looking forward to, hopefully a back-to-regular year next year. Kitchens, cafeterias back to regular, classrooms back to regular, and just gonna be like Irving. Post pandemic.
6:23, 2022, for $108,006.17. Three for accounts payable. 1117 from 5/17/2022 for $20,833.70. Number 1118 from 5/31/2022 for $11,148.30. And number 1119 from 6/14/2022 for $30,783.50.
Great, thank you. Did you get a little spread, any of you?
I really am.
Okay. Perfect, fantastic, thank you. Um, and then we can jump down to your, the Director of Finance and Operations report.
Sure, and I apologize for being late, I had the wrong time on my calendar, but, um...
Me too.
I thought I was gonna be 15 minutes early. Um, yeah, so it, it feels like I'm, because I work out of the school, I know the school the best, but I also realize that I haven't been to a school committee meeting since February, because March, we had to, Jen and I had to split, because I had to go to Leverett. April, we missed, and then May, I was at the Masbo Annual Institute, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials. So it was only that one either, so it's been January, February, June.
You've never been here in the school.
I know, and I wasn't even to the school, so this is my first real school committee meeting. Now the others weren't real, but, no. So, um, I did get to attend the Irving Town Meeting, where the budget was passed, and that budget for FY23 has been put into our budgeting system, into budget sense. So the, um, schools all have access to it, and we're gonna start to look at what happens July 1st when we roll into FY23. This is, I've been in this now role for almost six months, and everything is, is pretty new, but it's nice to kind of get six months down and finish out other six months, and then it won't be the first time doing everything for the school, so it's pretty exciting. The Masbo Annual Institute was a great experience. I spent three nights out in the Cape. There was, it was a lot of professional development. So I did some things on procurement, transportation, family and community support, end-of-year reporting. It was just lined up back-to-back-to-back sessions with some really knowledgeable people, and it was a really good experience. So now we're looking at the end of FY22 and how the budget looks. I put the, we put for all of the meetings, end-of-year transfers to vote, but I don't have any transfers at this time. And lastly, I don't know, Fleece had talked about the Birds of Prey.
Oh, no, I told you about Birds of Prey. Okay, good, you, I, I, that wasn't on my list.
Yes, since, uh, since I've worked, been working right next to the, the gym, it was really nice to be able to go and see the Birds of Prey presentation. Can't remember her name, though.
I don't remember either.
She was fantastic.
Really good.
You remember that?
I don't remember her name, but she was so funny.
She was really funny and really good with the kids, and she brought out six birds of prey and gave so much information about each one of them. I feel like I'm, you know, I'm 38, I still learn.
I've been watching from the side of the room, like, "Oh my God." But, I mean, I was a little concerned, were, were pre-K to sixth gonna be a captive audience?
Yeah.
And, oh my gosh, it was amazing. I was so impressed, and she said to me afterwards, said, "Do you want me to help you clean up?" She goes, "Oh, I, no one handles my birds." I said, "Okay, I just know how." And then she said, "I wanna tell you that this is the, this is the best audience I've had. The school is so polite, there's some schools I will never go back to again."
Yeah, she turned a couple of schools into the bus.
Yeah, she, yeah, she took a principal in the bus, and I was like, "I'll do that." So, but she was, gave such compliments, and it was really the first, you know, assembly the kids had been in. It wasn't the whole school altogether, but half and half, and they were amazing. For an hour.
For an hour, they were great, and yes, she told me the same thing, that the kids were just a great audience, really respectful, really interested in the birds. It was a little tiny screech owl that was adorable, and she had a, what, a gray horned owl and a barred owl, and then, I always forget the name of the little one that's gonna probably go extinct from the area. Which may be a little sad.
The falcon?
No. It was a falcon. And then there was a couple other ones. But anyways, that was the highlight, I think, of my experience.
Okay, I'm glad that could, and I hope to come to the lunch tomorrow, and that's a highlight too.
Uh, so I got, yes, I got to attend that with, um, accounts payable, Emily Felton, and HR payroll, Jessalyn Kowski, and so it was just a really good experience.
It'd be nice to see where the money goes. When it comes to those sort of events.
I miss the kids, like, coming out of the classroom and now not being around kids anymore, and then having experience to be in the room with them and to, to see them was really great. You know, it is nice to also pay bills and know where it goes. That was a good one.
Great, thank you so much. So no, no transfers, we're good on that, okay. Great, um, Budget and Personnel Committee, uh, we don't have a next meeting date. Uh, Union 28 Committee Report, looks like their next meeting is not until September. Was there a meeting in between? Anyone attend that one?
For...
For Union 28? Wasn't there one in June?
We had a, the second vote for the five-year rolling average.
Okay.
So it was a three-minute meeting that was there.
Okay.
Fine, they can't beat me.
Nobody can.
You will not beat me.
Craig says, "I think we made a record." No, you ain't beat me.
Yes, we did, we did vote to approve that.
Okay, fantastic, thank you very much for that. All right, so our next meeting date is September 2022 at 6:30. I don't think we have an exact date yet. Um, all right, old business, the legal retainer with Dupre Law Offices, the discussion and vote. Um, after reviewing it, um, it looks like we can opt out of the contract anytime we want to. Um, and, uh, my thoughts are that since we're already using them right now and we're in the middle of negotiations, uh, it might make sense to just continue on, um, and if, if for some reason we find something in, in the meantime, we're, we're not locked in, um, but I don't know, what is it, what do other people think about? Thoughts on?
Well, if, if we're in negotiations, you folks are using them, then we can opt out anytime.
Yep.
Why opt out now?
Okay, I just didn't know that. If everyone shares the same opinion, I just wanted to throw that there.
Yeah.
All right, fantastic. Um, I'll make a motion to go ahead and, um, sign our legal retainer with Dupre Offices for two years.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. All righty, so we did the kitchen procurement, the sixth-grade student activity funds. Uh, so I'll give you a little bit of background on the sixth-grade, uh, student activity funds. Um, so throughout, um, I'm sure some of you know, being parents out here, that, um, parents go ahead and fundraise over the years for their children. Typically, that money in sixth grade is used for the New York City trip. Um, and then, I'm actually not even quite sure what happens to the funds after, it might go to other classes. Um, but the reason for bringing it here tonight is to see, um, for, for this year and for future years, um, what to do with those funds. I guess I can go ahead and kind of give my opinion.
And I just wanna share one thing that was brought to me by someone else.
Sure.
Is another piece, so when I went in, Pat and I looked at the revolving account, found the funds, a total of $2,000... a total of two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents is what was the total was that was raised for sixth grade. So seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-three cents of that was raised by parent-teacher organization. And they, when I went to the officers, the officers would like that money to go towards the field trips that happened this year. So I subtracted that.
Yep.
And then it was brought to my attention by two people, that money was donated by Jillian Betters specifically from her Walmart funds. And that's six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So I don't know, does that get divided amongst the parents? Does that go to Jill's boys? Do we ask the Betters family what they'd like to do with that money? Because it's six hundred and twenty-five dollars, which would then bring the total amount left to distribute out to sixth grade families at seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-two cents. So I, I want to just be mindful of that money that was sort of like the PTO money.
Yep. No, I agree with that too. I don't know how you all feel as well. But I mean, I'd like to keep in, I mean, I know that Jill, yeah, obviously did a lot of donations and that money from Walmart makes sense to go to Gavin's class, which is her youngest. But I think we should set something moving forward, like at the end of the year, like the money gets either donated to a school. Like, I guess, I guess that's my thought is, I know not everyone's going to Gil Montague, but I would like to see the funds follow, follow them. So if that's a possibility, that's fine. I know that we tuitioned to Gil Montague. Again, I'm, I'm looking for discussion and how other people feel, because it's not just, not just my opinion.
No, we have three sixth grade parents.
No, I understand. And I want to know for the future. It doesn't matter what happens this year. I'd like to say, to stay consistent so that, again, when these parents are fundraising and raising these funds and not everything gets used, it, it follows, it follows the children.
So I'd like to just say one suggestion, and I was talking to Caitlin. So again, we went through all those accounts, Pat and I, and we're going to try to work with Caitlin this summer. I would love to see not have to fundraise. I mean, because, I, I mean, I would absolutely love to see not to have to fundraise and be able to do New York City. Or to do whatever field trip that anybody wants. We've had some discussions amongst Pi and what they're going to do moving forward is they're not going to be divvying it up amongst classes anymore. So they're going to do what a lot of other schools do and say, hey, we're going to the Connecticut Science Center. We need one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for a bus. Would they be, would you be willing to donate some of that? But the, the town is so generous. I mean, there's a large line item for field trips. So I don't know what all the fundraising is for. And I understand from the officers, what Jim Trill's idea was of dividing that money up. But I just feel like that we have such a generous line that I'm not even sure what we're fundraising for. I mean, I know it's for six, for the big trip.
I mean, as long as we're not increasing the budget, because I feel like we're at a pretty high budget as it is. You know what I mean? As long as we're not increasing that line item.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, this, I inherited this system. I've never seen a system like this ever in all my years of education.
But we still have K through six right now that have had some sort of fundraised fund.
Most of them, Jen, right now we've looked.
We still need a process.
Yeah, I think what Pat and I are going to work on this summer is working with Caitlin. Because there are some classes, like the preschool classes, who just have thirty dollars. Because there are some classes that haven't done this fundraising, especially since COVID. So going back and looking, I feel like it's like second grade might have some funds and that might be it. So, and I'd like to work with Caitlin on that because I'd like to either say like, here are the funds. And I know some other classes have done fundraising, but they're keeping the money in an account.
And it's. Outside of school.
Outside of school, yes. And that's, that's a class's purview, right? You know, if they like to do that. But I think in order to avoid, you know, where we are now, or making a policy moving forward of what's going to happen. I would like to say, no fundraising. But I don't know, you know, because, again, I inherited this, so I don't know enough about what went into it. A class had New York City happen this year with twenty-one kids, it would have been a lot. That money would never have even touched the cost of New York City. When you look at the actual money that was there, the two thousand, one hundred and forty-two, that wouldn't even have been enough. It wouldn't even touched it.
Still going to hear from the school committee what your thoughts are on this?
One of my other thoughts, other than it, I, I don't know how easily it can be, can transfer to the next school or whatever, which I think leaves it a little fuzzy because then you have kids who are going to different schools. I would be willing to consider a class gift, like where it's discussed among the students and their teachers that they have this. What can we give back to our Irving community? Is it books to the library? Is it something like that? Maybe that's a way to end the account as they leave and it's just a thought. So that every little class leaves their mark on the school.
I like that too. I also thought maybe end of the year, you know, if you have a field day or something and the class has some extra money, that they could choose to have some additional whatever treats or something there.
And they did that this year, Dave. Yeah, they had pizza party, they had, and those, so they, there definitely were those things. It did not come out of that lump sum though, just so you all know. But it could, if that was the case, right? Going towards graduation, the balloons.
Sure.
The flowers that were on the stage, you know, those sorts of things all just ended up coming out of student activities to offset that cost.
So after sixth grade, the money's gone? Is that what you're saying? As they raise money each year, at the end of sixth, sixth grade graduation, they, they have to get rid of the money somehow?
Well, that's what our discussion is. What are you going to do? What to do with the funds? Because there's, there seemed to be a large leftover funds this year. So that is why we're, we're having this discussion on what we should do moving forward, not only this year, but in future years as well.
Okay. And with the, with, when parents donate their time like Jill Betters did, are you saying you wanted to keep it with your class?
So hers was specific because she actually asked for a donation from Walmart through all her fundraising. So she had that, that six hundred and fifty, or six hundred and twenty-five dollars directly donated through her workplace. So it was like a one-time, one-parent donation.
That's a, yeah, that was a perk of Walmart.
Well, I have a friend that works for Verizon and she donates her time at the church. And then they make donations to the church. So I'm sure there's going to be other situations. So I'm sure the parents who do that want to keep it with their class, their kids' class.
And going back and looking at the accounting, it was split between the sixth grade and, you know, both boys' classes. And something I think of too.
Sweet, that six twenty-five was split between both boys?
No, that was just for this class. Yeah, just for this class. You know, I'm just saying Mark Burnett retires and he doesn't, no, there's not a teacher who wants to do New York, New York City. So is the policy going to be that the money that's been raised is for New York City, say Mark doesn't come back next year? Right?
So it's for a field trip?
It's for a field trip. So I guess that, I'll, I'll own the mistake that I assumed that's what was, this money was used. So really the sixth grade class this year used, let's see. Played Big Y Ice Cream for forty-six dollars and Pizza, thirty-six dollars. Greenfield Farmer's Market, seventy-nine dollars. Graduation Supply reimbursement, a hundred and fifty dollars. Science Center was three hundred and eight dollars, a hundred and seventy-two dollars, two different payments. Twelve hundred dollars for the bus. Morris Hill was three thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. And another reimbursement for supplies bought for a hundred and seventy-seven. So that's way over two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars that was raised.
Right, but also we have ten thousand dollars in the field trip line. And we also have ten thousand dollars with the, which was the experiential learning line, which typically was.
What I just want to get clarity from all of you is, and maybe this has to be a bigger discussion for families that have done fundraising. If it's, if you have five thousand dollars left, but there's no New York City trip. Do you get it back? Does it go to another field trip?
Look, again, this is what we're trying to discuss right now. And we're trying to, yeah, come up with a plan. So we can make a decision this evening or do you want to think about it or?
I'd rather think about it and not, you know.
I like Katie's idea. So currently, would someone like to? We can determine basically what to do with the six hundred and twenty-five dollars. We can make a motion to go ahead and return that money to Gavin's class if you wanted to. I don't know.
I think that's the proper thing to do.
I agree. I'll make a motion to take six hundred and twenty-five dollars from the current sixth grade class and donate it to, what grade is Gavin going into?
He's going to third.
Into the incoming third grade class at Irving Elementary.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I think something I'd really love, you know, I know we're not going to make a decision tonight, but to really come up with a fundraising policy, right? Like what are we raising the funds for? You know, that, I think that's something really to think about.
And I think that will come up, come with our policy meeting. I think that might be something that we can add.
What do the other three schools do, do you know?
I know Leverett has some policy on it. There's some through the MASC that you can adopt. I don't know what Irving has, what the policies from.
We don't, I look through our band. We don't have a policy.
So it's definitely needs to be included in there somewhere.
And do, do these numbers go through your office or is it just individual schools?
The, the amounts in the student activity accounts, not necessarily through my office.
Should that be, should that be a?
Should the debt bear off through the town accountant?
Right, the, the treasurer, the, the cash council, basically through the treasurer's office is reconciled through the treasurer's office. But Pat and, Pat reconciles with the town accountant. So the town accountant's also, so there's all these checks and balances, which is fantastic.
I was just wondering where it went.
Circling back to the sixth grade that just left with the decision made to keep that money within the school or Gavin's class and whatever.
The six twenty-five, right.
Yep. We still have a.
Seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Right, so that will just hang out there until we make a decision?
Yeah, it doesn't go anywhere.
Okay.
If you, if you want to divide it up amongst each student, it's thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents.
Can I ask what Pat, like past practice was for these funds or leftover?
There's never been anything left because.
Yeah, they always drain it.
It's happened.
You just used up all of it.
Always used it all.
But we would go to the student activity funds before the other lines?
We, it, it would take, go ahead and decrease the cost per student.
Okay, so you would empty out the student activity lines and then take from the?
Correct, and then take from the, yes, yeah.
And it's been hard because there's been no field trips in the three years that I've been here. Other than the, the some that have happened this year with the sixth grade, because the teachers were trying to give the kids something. Because they couldn't give them nor, you know, Dave, think about Danielle's year, right? There was nothing. We had a drive-by graduation, you know, so that was really. So every year, you know, there's something, it's been something my three years here. So this is the first, it's coming up, we haven't had any.
I would probably look at the MISC, you know, policies and probably run some things by Adam Dupre. I think there's, it gets a little bit messy with student activity funds and with fundraising.
It's in your hands, Dave. You and Caitlin and Lisa and Jen.
I'm super jealous. Yeah, I'm going to work with Caitlin over the summer because I want to see exactly, you know, do we take all the PTO funds and just give them to PTO? And then they get to dole them out, you know? I, I don't know, but looking to see how much is there. And where's the last class that did a fundraiser? And that was probably the fall of my first year at the Fall Festival. The parents ran tables. I think that's probably the last of the classes that did something where it got deposited to Pat.
Thank you. All ready, the Pi Report.
Just really briefly, we handed out the two scholarships to Dylan Burnett and Kylie Palmquist. And we did the sixth grade T-shirts. And we finished up with a Hillside fundraiser that did okay. We made about two hundred dollars.
It's free money!
Yeah. And that's about it and we're just getting ready for next year.
Great, thank you so much. All right, policy review and update. So we have first reading on AC, ACAB, JICK. Hopefully everyone had those and were able to go ahead and read. Second reading in our first vote. So we have first vote on KH, A, KHB, KI, LA, and LBC.
I'll make a motion to accept JHI, JHA, excuse me, JHB, KI, LA, LBC for a first vote.
I think the first two were KH and KHB.
Did I say it wrong?
Yep.
KH, A.
KHB.
KHB, K, A, KI, geez, LA, LBC for a first, for a first vote. Fair.
Yep, and I'll second it.
Perfect. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, seven PM here.
All right, let's put it on the calendar.
Yay, Irving Policy Committee is Tuesday, September twentieth, at six thirty. And we are going to adjourn into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and not to return in open session. And that is at seven nineteen. Aye, Ikorn.
Aye, Shagun.
Aye, Sam.
Aye, McLaughlin.
All right, thank you everyone so much for coming.
Thank you.